All right, we are currently live.
And we'll call this meeting of the Jamestown City Council Work Session for July 13th to order tonight. To the clerk, do we have any quick comment tonight?
I have two items tonight. Dear City Council, my name is Eric Hagland and I've been in business for nine months in the city of Jamestown. And I unfortunately have had some major setbacks over the last four months due to COVID-19. As I see our beautiful town, I can't imagine all the food trucks clogging up the streets and taking away from our downtown businesses that are currently open and operating at 50% capacity. My current sales are down 48% versus prior COVID-19 and not getting any better. I currently employ 16 people in the city of Jamestown as cooks, bartenders, waitstaff and dishwashers. If food trucks are allowed in Jamestown and takes away from my current business, I have, I have, which is not much, I will be forced to close down during the lunch hour and lay off three people. I'm looking to keep my staff intact and not disrupt the lives of my staff. Please reconsider having food trucks in the area and keep Jamestown beautiful as it is intended. Eric Hagland, owner of Four Below Haggies Bar and Grill. And dear City Council members, it was recently brought to my attention that you are meeting to vote upon the ability to have food trucks placed in several locations in the downtown Jamestown area. Some of these trucks will be set up, will be set up to be in direct competition with local restaurants. Our local restaurants are some of the city's revenue through property taxes and employ many people in the community. With COVID-19 almost decimating this industry, don't you think this is like putting a nail in the coffin? I myself urge you to take caution in being part of something that will negatively impact the downtown businesses you are trying to build up. I love the idea of not downtown Jamestown. There must be a better, there must be another arena for food trucks to thrive such as city, state and village parks, the boat landing or special public events. Thank you for your consideration, Mark DiVincenzo, ChautauquaForSale.com real estate.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification for the two letters, I know Mr. Hagland, I believe, sent us all into that letter individually to our emails. And just a point of clarification, we are not voting this evening on the food trucks. That would be planned for vote to come up two weeks from tonight at our regular voting session. And I do know that there's been several meetings and discussions and we're still finalizing a plan on that and certainly still open for discussion on that if anybody else wants to. Who's been involved with that committee wants to chime in, otherwise I just wanted to make sure that people know that tonight there's no formal vote on the food trucks.
It will be discussed during the public safety session.
Okay, all right, we'll have further discussion on that. And that's it for comments this evening, correct? Okay, if not anymore, then we'll move on to our committee reports and we'll move on to finance committee and the Chairwoman, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Ecklin.
Thank you, Mr. President, our first resolution is resolved that warrants be drawn and paid to the respective owners and paying agents the sum of $46,406.27 in accordance with the bond and note requirements as follows. Public Improvement Bond Series A, issue of April 22, 2015. $46,406.27 for six months interest at 3% per annum on $3,165,000. Also note that this is the second of two interest payments scheduled for the year, the first was paid along with the principal on 2/1/20. And Ryan, I will add for, per Ryan, that this is for an original bonding that included DPW Parks Police and Fire Equipment, Tracy Plaza Deck Rehab and Storm Sewer Management and City Building Repairs and Traffic Coatings. So it was a big bond in its initial takeout, so. Any questions? Okay, the second resolution is also a bond payment. Resolved that the warrants be drawn and paid to the respective owners and paying agents the sum of $65,606.25 in accordance with the bond and note requirement as follows. Public Improvement Bonds issue of November 19th, 2013. Defecence of 2004 Chautauqua County IDA bonds, $65,606.25 for six months interest at 2.25 per annum on $3,855,000. Note that this is the second of two interest payments scheduled for this year. The first was paid along with the principal on 1/15/2020. And this was a public improvement bond that included a $6.2 million bond. 4.7 million was for the Cherry Street parking ramp and 1.5 was for the Main Street parking ramp. That's what those payments are for. Any questions?
Thank you for explaining those payments, Ken.
I'm sorry, Grant, I didn't hear you.
I appreciate you explaining where they went, thank you.
No problem, yep, no problem, thank you.
Just a further note on that too, that, you know, we've been paying many of these down and our, our debt has been steadily decreasing. And so we've been paying these off at a regular rate, they're going down and our debt ratio has decreased significantly, thank you.
Thank you, we have a third resolution. Whereas the county of Chautauqua heretofore applied for the state funding on the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services, Give Grant Program for 2020. And whereas the county's application has been approved and a portion of the grant funds must be shared with the city of Jamestown Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and police chief be and they hereby are authorized and directed to participate in give for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021 with funding in the amount of $72,221 provided by the state of New York. Ryan, do you know off the top of your head if this was close to what last year was?
I do not, but I could follow up on that.
Okay. And I don't know. We have Acting Chief Tim Jackson on here if he wants to add anything in particular about the Give Grant, what the funds are used for specifically.
Um, the funds go to more proactive patrols and target areas. That could include beat patrols and extra patrols and anything else that comes up.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment, Councilwoman Ecklin, that I just want to recognize that Captain Isaacson has been diligent in working on this Give Grant program for many years and that he's brought in upwards of $1.4 million to the city and has been responsible for this grant program and I just wanted to give him some, some credit for that.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, if nothing else, we'll move on to the fourth and final resolution from finance and that is resolve that firefighter Ryan Saunders be and he hereby authorized to attend the New York State Fire Investigation Course at the New York State Academy of Fire Science to be held in Montour Falls, New York on July 20th through 24th and July 27th through 31st, 2020 with expenses paid pursuant to Section 77B of the General Municipal Law. And we will note that this was previously approved in October of 2019 by Resolution Number 201910A04. But this training had, has been rescheduled and is now scheduled for the July date. Any questions? Okay, I believe that's it for finance.
Do you want to have Ryan go over any of that, I know we received this.
Absolutely.
He wants to cover on revenues and expenditures, any concerns or good things? Is there anything you want to highlight quickly, Ryan?
Of course. Yeah, so, so I'd sent out a memo last week to everyone, just kind of outlining, outlining the 2020 June budget update for the first half of the year. Looking at revenues overall, obviously not, not surprising that we are running below budget and also against prior year. Looking at the BPU pilot payments overall are down around 5% and $100,000 to budget expectations. It is mainly driven by the electric division. But also water and district heat are below budget while our wastewater and solid waste are running slightly above budget. A couple of the other notable revenues that are trailing prior year, we have parking meter and violations down 48% and $97,000. Fines and court fees are down 60% and $30,000 and the mortgage tax is down 11% and $9,000. And I did actually just receive an email this evening from the county on our second quarter sales tax payment. And we are going to be down 13.4% compared to last year, which would put us down about 2.5% on a year-to-date basis versus last year. So it is not down as much as we had originally anticipated. We also had, had received notice from, from the state that the CHIPS funding is, is cut by 20%. We have taken action and cut back on some projects to, to plan for that. But we have not heard anything on the general funds, general state aid funding from the state yet, so that is still up in the air. Overall, looking at expenditures, our salary accounts are all in line with budget and we do remain on track to deliver Phase One of the Financial Restructuring Plan. A couple of callouts that I, that I did want to talk about, we're looking at the, the fire department, obviously with all of the increased calls in the month of June, we had some significant overtime costs throughout the month. And we've beaten up about 61% of our overtime budget in the fire department, so it's something that we will be monitoring going forward. Also, we have three unbudgeted retirement buyouts, one in the assessor's office and then two with Chief Snowing's and Captain Isaacson retiring on the police department. But, but overall, I'm looking, you know, looking at the police and fire department salary lines, we are still tracking favorably despite all of those. And then the only other thing that I did want to touch base on was the health insurance claims, we are down about 8% as compared to where we were last year. Which it, which is a great thing, but, but again, with all of the volatility that we do see in health insurance claims, it's, it's very tough to, to predict. So I would say I'm cautiously optimistic that will remain within budget for the full year. Is there anyone have any questions for me on the revenues or expenditures?
No, thank you very much, Ryan, like you said, the sales tax is still down 13.4, which is a huge number, but thankfully only 2.5 for year-to-date, but still that's concerning for me going into this quarter. Especially with a little bit of resurgence, so, thank you.
Thanks, is that it for finance? We're done with finance, okay. Okay, we'll move on to there is, I see there's nothing under housing.
We have a couple, Mr. President, I'm sorry, we have a couple items. Before I start, just to let you know, I'm, I'm getting a couple of emails that people are having a hard time with the Zoom connecting and I just got kicked off and put back on, so I don't know what's going on, so just so that the council knows that. But for housing, we just have a couple of items, just to update. And I'd like to, for Councilman Sheldon to talk about the healthy housing because he is our liaison for that, that group, for the committee, for the housing committee. So Councilman Sheldon, if you could just talk about the healthy housing, they had a meeting last week, could you just briefly give us an update?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman James. The Healthy Housing Task Force met, had a Zoom meeting last week, it was first meeting probably five months anyway. The, the big news is the county health department is applying for another HUD grant for lead hazard control. It's, it's going to be based or throughout the county, so they're going to focus mostly on rental properties, but low to moderate income homeowners also will be able to apply for this if, if they do get awarded this. They're working in conjunction with Chautauqua Opportunities to get this grant. And it's, they're hopeful to get up to, up towards $5 million over, I believe it's a three and a half year period. Similar to the grants they've had in the past, but it's, it was definitely a lot of lead work to be done out there. So this is, this will help prevent some children from being lead poisoned. And during my segment of the meeting, I brought up that the city had received CDBG funds to help landlords and tenants either receive rent or pay rent that they might have lost due to the COVID-19 outbreak, so. I brought that information to them, so hopefully we can get a few more people applying for their grant money that we have.
Okay, well, great, thank you, Councilman Sheldon, because that's a great segue for, Crystal, I have asked Crystal to give us an update on that block grant, so.
Uh, yeah, so with the rental assistance component of the CDBG COVID response funds, we've actually only received seven rental applications. Stephanie Wright has been working with each of the applicants to get all of the documentation that they need to submit. I think a we'll say a challenge in the rental assistance applications is that the tenant and landlord have to work together to get all of the information submitted. So I think some tenants have had a difficult time, whether it's they, they're hesitant to do that or they are waiting for landlords to submit the information to them. We've made an effort to reach out to a number of our landlords that we, we have regular contact with as well as the the REIA, which is the Real Estate Investors Association, which is a group of landlords. And I think there's over 100 landlords in that organization, so they've sent that out, that information out to all of their landlords to then disperse to their tenants. So hopefully this week we'll, we'll actually have all of the information for at least those seven potential candidates. And we'll be able to start releasing some funds, but so far we haven't received a totally complete application at this point. Or there are some applications that have come in that aren't, the tenants aren't necessarily qualified, so.
Um, Crystal, is there a deadline on that?
No, it's as, as the funds are available, so there's $300,000 available to, to renters to catch up on, on some of their rent payments, so.
Is, is there a limit on how much they can apply for?
A maximum of $1,500.
That's good, thank you so much, I appreciate.
No problem.
Hey, Crystal, I have another question. Yeah, I wasn't sure if you were, we were moving on, so I don't, if you have something else, I got a question for Crystal. No, I just know, Crystal, you met with a group of, of people from a local church who wanted to talk to the city about housing. Did you do that last week?
We did, yes. They have a really eager and skilled group of congregants that would like to volunteer. That's a complicated thing because with our funding sources, we can't actually have volunteers assist with projects that we, we have. However, there's some potential for us to connect them with the land bank. They actually have a couple of new programs that they're getting ready to roll out. So I've been in touch with Gina Peridas about the potential for that, where they can actually use volunteer labor really is what it is. So this group is really eager and, and, and great and we can kind of be the referral source and work together with the land bank to kind of steer that group and the land bank into potential candidates that would be good for their, their kinds of skills, so they can do, you know, roofs and porches and all of those things. But when, when we, when it goes through us, there has to be prevailing wage and all kinds of different criteria, so.
Thanks, um, going back to the money you said for rental relief, are we publicizing that anywhere, is that going in the paper or in the radio or any kind of PSA? How do we get that information out to people who might need it, who might not be on the call?
So there's been press releases that went out, it's been in the paper, it's been, it's on, on social media and a number of different places. It's on our website. And again, it was shared with REIA to, to distribute to their landlords and then hopefully their landlords are sharing with their tenants. If there's any other suggestions or anything that we've missed, we're, we're certainly open to sharing it in other places.
I wonder if something could be put in the BPU newsletter with the utility bills.
That actually is something that we're looking into and I don't, it hasn't happened at this point, but there will be sort of a joint press release, I think, and then BPU hopefully will share it in their newsletter. So I don't want to confirm that, I, I think that's a question probably more for Dave, but that was, I think that was the intent when he reached out last week, so.
Uh, Councilman Reinhardt, is that the group that, the church group that I had asked you to do a presentation?
I believe so, I, I think that's what. Yeah, I think that's what that was.
It was Zion, Zion.
That's what we had asked for them to come and do a presentation to the housing committee, okay. All right, well, that's it for us, so if there's any other comments or questions. That's it for the housing.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to public safety and Chairman, Councilwoman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first resolution, we have the same that finance had, the Give Grant for 2020. And I believe that former Chief Snowing said that the amount was just about the same as last year, so fortunately we didn't get the 20% reduction like a lot of the things we're getting from the state. We also had the resolution to allow Ryan Sanders to go to the Fire Investigation School, it was postponed. And third item we have is about the 2020 mobile food vending pilot program. We had a meeting last week with myself, three other council people, Director of Department of Development and the Building Inspector as well as Mayor's Executive Assistant. Talk about this pilot program, some of the ideas that we had had, some of the input that the public had put into it and some of the possible changes, so. Like to turn this over to Crystal to kind of present this to the, the rest of the council.
Sure. So there are a number of changes that we made, I think when it was originally proposed, we had talked about there being a 100-foot distance from food truck to business entry. We've changed that to 125 feet. Something else that we have added is there will be two days a week, we're proposing Tuesdays for lunchtime and Thursdays for an evening time to do a, an organized food truck rodeo or rally in a centralized area. Those areas have not been totally defined as of yet, but some ideas that we've had are Baker Park down by the Riverwalk near the BPU, areas that would be easy to get to. But that are not necessarily right downtown. I think it's important to note that this is, because it's a pilot program, we are looking for it to be sort of fluid. To make changes as we go and to, to kind of continue to learn as we go. That we're not codifying in ordinance at this point. We want participation from not just the food truck vendors, but other existing businesses who potentially be impacted, so as we do roll this out, there will be some evaluation that happens. Hopefully some, some continued input coming from other businesses. You know, we, we want to give it a chance and try it out and see what works and see what doesn't work and make changes as we go. So I don't know, if, if there's anything specific that anyone wants to talk about with regard to the policy? Or that, that's, it's not, I guess it's really not quite a policy at this point, it's a, it's a pilot program, so.
I wanted to bring something up, Crystal. I just wanted to share with everyone that about two hours ago, I received a phone call from Anthony Cruzamano from GL's. He's very upset. He asked me to express his sentiment that he was, was not for food trucks at all. He's very concerned about his business. The financial impact due to COVID has been heavy on him. He specifically said to me, and these are, these are his words, and I, I told him that I would express his concern. He specifically brought up Studio D Catering and the food cart that belongs to Studio D, he's very concerned that the food cart is across the street or right around the corner from him. And his exact words, and I told him I would repeat them, is he said that he feels that Studio D is getting preference from City Hall. That there's favors being done for Studio D. Says he doesn't like it. Feels that it's unfair. Wanted to know how this happened. I explained to him the pilot program, the distances of 125 feet. He said that he doesn't think that Studio D is going to be 125 feet away from his business. He also said that Four Below was not happy about the cart being across the street as well. He's concerned that it's further diminishing parking spaces which are already a, a premium. And he just wanted me to voice his, his displeasure and that he feels that there's favoritism going on when it is what it comes down to. These are his words, not mine, I, I told him that I would bring this forward to the, to the council and to yourself.
Crystal, I also have a question, given that we first talked about 100 feet, then 150 or 200 feet. How many locations does 125 feet give for food trucks? How many could potentially be in the downtown area?
I don't know if we have a specific number, but, and I don't want to put Zach on the spot. But the radius illustration that Zach put together that, that showed what 100 feet, what potential for food trucks there would be at 100 feet, 125 feet, 150 and 200 is, I think, pretty telling. I don't know, Zach, if you have those handy by any chance, I'm sorry if I am putting.
No, I, I do, I do have 125, but share my screen real quick.
I don't know that I saw the 125.
I don't think I did.
No, no one did it, I actually wish that would, that would have been in this packet we got, sorry.
I, I apologize for not, I, I remember sending it a few weeks back when we were working on this, but I do apologize for not sending 125 feet in the packet.
So as I'm looking at this, is this, all the circles are within 125 feet of another business? Or I mean, I should say at least 125 feet away from another restaurant, I, I'm not exact. I'm looking at.
Correct.
Yes.
Not overlapping, so you've got like in some areas, one, two, three, four, five, that are almost right on top of each other?
Yes, yeah, all these are, all these are, the circles are 125 feet. And it would be 125 feet from the nearest seating area, so if restauranted outside seating, then it would be measured from that distance.
But just for a point of clarification, the circles represent where they can. But just for a point of clarification, uh the circles uh represent where they cannot be?
Yes.
Want to make that so people are seeing this, we, those of us who are at the meeting, that that would be this one, we we were there, we got this. So just for clarification, those circles would be areas where food carts would would not be allowed. Uh so if you, you know, people can look through that to see that that would, that's an accurate way to look at it would be to to have that there, so people could see exactly where uh they could and could not be located based on the 125-foot radius.
Thank you, because I I guess I was reading reverse. I thought the circles were was where they could be located. And to that point, you know, and to uh Mr. Cusamano's point, um having had a family involved in the restaurant business, the profit margin is about 5%. And that's fairly well-known throughout the industry. So his point is well-taken in terms of watching how the restaurants that currently have brick-and-mortar facilities, it's going to be very difficult. And it's not that I'm opposed to some iteration of food trucks, but I do understand the problem that it's going to be for those to see inside the restaurants. Because it is going to be extremely difficult with the staffing they'll need and what they need to do to take care of the safety of individuals coming in. This is going to be a difficult balance to assist the current brick-and-mortar restaurants, but also to encourage some outside vending to come in that might bring some people downtown.
I I. Miss, Mr. Cusamano, he one thing I didn't add, you know, one of his complaints was is that uh um he told me he pays $7,000 a year in property taxes on his building. And um you know, he said that uh mobile food trucks are going to come in, they're not going to be paying any property taxes, probably be operating on a cash business. So that was a, that was a big uh, a big concern of his. I I explained to him that we had had a couple meetings and that uh we were working together and we were trying to come up with uh some sort of um resolution that would, could help everyone out, but uh he's he's definitely not happy about this.
That's the the point is that the people that are paying property taxes and anchoring the buildings downtown are going to be at a serious disadvantage under the current climate of what they have to operate under. There there's no question that it's going to cost them more um in terms of what their expenses are to have a building versus having a mobile truck that you can pull in and out if you decide it's a terrible night, it's raining, the weather's bad, you don't have to pull your truck out.
He uh he had also asked me who was going to be responsible um for making sure that trucks were, you know, at least 125 feet away from business. Who who was going to be the enforcement on this? I told him that that was actually a question that I asked during our last meeting and um and it was explained to us during the meeting that that would be uh uh the DoD would be responsible for uh any kind of violations.
Do we have an idea of how many people um are going, food trucks are going to be?
So I think the the short answer to that is no, and I don't think it's going to be very many. We do know, obviously, Studio D has purchased a food truck. We also know that there are a a handful of others. As far as I know, Full Moon Rising, there are also carts. So for instance, uh the Hot Spot Cafe has like a hot dog cart kind of thing. I I don't think that we're going to see a huge influx of food trucks coming in. Um and I think that 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 might be, you know, obviously that's a concern. Something to point out is that we did when assessing fees and and what the fee structure might be, we made the fee for local businesses to have a food truck. Um $150 for the season versus an outside of the city, not just of of the county, but of the city businesses, it would be double, so it would be $300. You know, as far as number goes, you know, it's it's hard to say. Right now, we don't have a whole lot of people other than Studio D, that is really the only one. Um and then Hector with his um hot dog cart, who is interested in putting that out, those are the only two that I have been approached by or or have had you know, any solid information as to where they're where they plan to go and and when. Something else to point out is that currently, under our current code, we have just a peddler's license. So right now, we don't have any policy in the books regulating food trucks. So they could go anywhere that they want to at this point in time. So I guess that's that's part of the reason that that getting some kind of ordinance or some kind of policy, even as a pilot program, i- is important, is so that we can work through all of those things. You know, something else to point out is the the few businesses that have approached us or that do have food trucks or plan to have food trucks are all existing businesses in the city. They're not anyone new coming from outside of the city. They are adapting to the the situation that everyone is adapting to or is dealing with. So it's not, you know, they're they're trying to expand or change the way that they're doing things, retooling their businesses to um survive as well.
So can I make a suggestion? We, you know, those of us who attended the meeting, there was a lot of discussion about, and there were some tweaks and changes to this. I don't know, this has not been sent out with the changes in it. Can we have like the full thing sent to everybody? And I I guess to me, I I look at this, there's a lot of miscommunication and especially within the community of business owners. It's hard to kind of get a handle and explain all this. If we had all this and we had a, you know, the ability to completely answer all the questions and explain them with a, you know, with the updated packet and so forth, uh a lot of maybe this could be alleviated with uh better communication with some of the business owners, just to.
I I was under the impression that you did have the updated packet, so if you have.
Yeah.
We have the updated one, but I, Tony, are you meaning a marked up of what we've gone through or like the reiterations?
Okay, here's, is this the new one? I thought it was the same one. I got a copy of it, but I was under the impression it was the same.
I I just also want to add, Crystal, you you know, you you were asked how many businesses are interested, but we also have to keep in mind that this is a policy that we're going to, whether it's a pilot program or a policy, whatever, that it impacts not just today, but the future. And you have to think about that fact when we go through this, that it's not just because of the five that have reached out to you or 10 that have reached out to you that are all local businesses. This has this has the capability of bringing in outside, and we have to keep that in perspective as well.
Want to point out one thing about Studio D. She is a brick-and-mortar restaurant. She's right the thing right between where it says Lucille and Ball and Little Theater. So I, Crystal, I don't remember, was there an exemption for brick-and-mortar places to to put these food trucks within that?
Yes, they actually, if they have a brick-and-mortar establishment, they could actually put up a food truck directly in front of their business. In this particular case, uh they share a wall with Four Below and you know, are separated, their entrances are separated, but they essentially share the same parking spaces directly in front of their business. So she opted to go across the street and Four Below actually has the two parking spots in front of uh their business designated for their takeout customers. So that was a compromise that uh was made so that they could both you know, benefit from having easier access to their businesses.
Are we losing parking spots in that location?
Um there are two parking spots that are designated for Four Below. So the short answer.
No, no, I mean with her moving across the street in the parking lot.
There are three uh three parking spots that will be designated for her and that would take three parking spots out of that area as well. But in.
Since we're losing five parking spots in a very small area. Cause he already has two and she wants, her plan is for three?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh can I ask a question? Um Crystal, we, you you said we don't have a policy right now.
We do not have a food truck specific.
There's nothing to prevent uh a food truck, say, from Buffalo right now coming down here.
Correct.
But they aren't.
Correct.
And Tom let me add, because that fee is $500.
That's what I was going to ask.
The current fee is 500 for, the the one we're proposing is 300 for outside the city, or could be.
For food spa, food truck specific, yes.
Okay.
Well, when we had events in the past, you know, the Comedy Festival Week, there are a lot of food trucks and I can't recall all of them, but I don't believe all of them were local. Now, I could be wrong, but again, you got volume. People might have been willing to come from out of the area to do that, but I don't know who all the vendors were. So, you know, and I know in the past, we have had complaints from some of the businesses about those very food trucks coming in, but you know, there's been more tolerance during the festival week to allow that. But I know we had issues in the past with events downtown. And I think as a result, some of the businesses have done some carts and and tried to be part of it. But for some of the other businesses, I don't know that they got a lot of volume of traffic into their actual businesses. And now with COVID, it's a different story as well. But this has been any event downtown, whether it's a food truck or a local business wanting to stay open or feeling that they're they're not getting traffic because of the parking, because people aren't willing to come in, because they can't get a place to to get into their restaurant. So Kim's point about the five parking spaces, you know, especially if these businesses do reopen, it's going to be hard.
With regard to Studio D, um I I don't want to, I don't, I disagree with the the idea that they're getting preference to the extent that she isn't a restaurant, so she doesn't have a a menu or anything like that. She does catering and um I don't know, I I haven't had a chance to talk with her, but I don't know how much business she's had, if any at all. That's the thing. So um as a person who's trying to make a living as well, I think we we are responsible to kind of um provide some assistance for that. We've talked about in our meeting, a central location. We've talked about them giving us a map where they're going to be. So we've looked at a lot of different things. And so I don't want to say that this is set stone. Um we certainly have several things maybe to still discuss, but she is just catering. She's not a a come in and sit down and serve type of place. So I just want to make sure that people understand that uh I don't know, I don't, I don't see it as preferential treatment. I see it more so us trying to help people who have businesses downtown. So she has a place on on Second Street, um and she's trying to run a business as well. So that's just kind of where I am with that.
I have one question that I thought of unfortunately after the meeting. Right now, the police department inspects um and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong. Is it cabs you look at to make sure they're safe?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess I, as you've heard me in these meetings, I'm always asking public safety questions because it's a concern for me as well. Or how are we, Crystal, how are we going to handle this? I know I mentioned, you know, line of sight and some other stuff in the meeting, but safety of these vehicles, I mean, to me, it's a public safety issue if something should happen to one of these food trucks. I'm not talking carts, I'm talking trucks. If they're not in a safe location or parked somewhere and inadequate equipment, do we have a plan to inspect them? Um what is, what is that plan?
It would have to be in compliance with all uh department codes. So the health department actually inspects them and issues them a permit.
For the food, I'm talking the safety of the of of the, it's not a vehicle. I, correct me what I, what you really want to call it, Tim, but I mean, they have wheels, they're trailers, they're attached to vehicles, I guess. You know, I I just don't want to leave us liable in with something.
Kim.
Yeah.
If they're in a right-of-way or a city parking lot, um we'd be looking at it, Larry would be looking at it as well as I suppose the police department will be looking at it also. So it's more of a kind of a team effort. No different than a construction truck or a crane or.
Okay, but I think that needs to also be defined as, I mean, I've asked for some clarification in this plan about like safety and stuff. We probably should outline that that's also part of it.
Yeah, I'm here under the guidelines. It also mentions the Jameson Fire Department Operations Permit, which I I believe just means that the fire inspector can take a look at these vehicles and make sure they are in compliance and not a fire hazard.
I understand, but we have had no input from the police department, so I'm asking for that. Are we covered? Are we? That's something I just need, think we need to be comfortable with.
Um you know, I did talk to uh Diane Diane from Studio D of, oh, probably a few weeks ago about this. And um she was saying that uh she would only be open from like 11 to 2, and she doesn't feel that there's any uh competition because, you know, because if people want, especially like if people wanted um a cocktail or some kind of beverage, uh that they would be going to the, you know, to the pub to to uh, you know, to these other landmark or whatever, Forte's. But they would go there and they would just kind of like just come to her for uh food. So uh just saying that she was telling me that she doesn't feel that there would be any competition because then, and again, that she would just be open from 11 to 2 for the lunch hours. What's that, whatever that's worth.
I had a question for uh Crystal, uh more or less to clarify things, maybe for people that are watching. The the hu, the 125 feet, Crystal, um the existing brick-and-mortar places downtown, are they exempt from that 125 feet rule if this was uh to pass?
Yes, they could go directly in front of their own establishment if they wanted to.
Right, yeah, in front of their own, but they they obviously, they have to stay away, they have to stay 125 feet away from other establishments?
Yes. Unless they're in front of their own.
Right, so if um if uh the pub wants to have a food truck, they have to be 125 feet away from uh Crown Street Roasting or, is that correct?
Sure, yep. And then um the other part of that is unless they get written consent from the other establishment's business owner.
Okay.
So if if Crown Roasting, for instance, was okay with the pub coming and and having a food truck in front of their establishment, they could grant that permission.
And this 125 feet, is this like as the crow flies or what if it's around the corner or how does that work?
It's from the um nearest seating area. So for instance, if a restaurant has outdoor seating, it would start from that measurement would be taken from that nearest seating location.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a radius, Jeff. Um it just, it just goes around that, so it's it can, it can go around the corner, it can go over to the next street if that, if that's.
Right.
That's the case.
Okay, so what would be the next step in this? Are we moving forward? How do we, what's what's happening here? Hey, so what would be the next step in this? Are we moving forward? How do we, what's what's happening here? Kinda bring it to kind of a.
I believe if there's any modifications, we need to get those to Zach and Crystal uh before meeting on like twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, and again, I've been looking over these, I'm sorry, I looked at the, they look so identical. I thought it was the same one that we had gotten a copy the other day, but the changes are in here. Uh I would suggest that um, you know, there are business owners who still have concerns, but uh either council people or DOD or the mayor's office, whoever, reach out to them and either email them copies of these, uh sit down and talk to them, try to explain them to try to alleviate any concerns or questions in the meantime.
I I had one other quick question, um insurance, what uh what kind of insurance are the uh trucks gonna have to carry? I mean, um God forbid, if someone was getting food, they stepped out from behind a truck. Like Kim was saying, line of sight issues and they were, they were struck in the, in the road. I mean, are they gonna have to carry a certain amount of uh insurance?
Yes, and they're also um going to be required to list the city as an additional insured on their policy.
Standard city insurance rider.
Any other questions or anything, anything more on that, Brent?
I don't have anything else. I've got one item for new business and one item for discussion. Uh under new business, we have a tour rate card request uh from DLS. I have uh LLC David Shutter's two forty Lafayette Street in Fulton, New York. Pretty much in line with the other rates. And then the item for discussion, we had an email from uh Mr. Larry King uh about Carolina Street. Uh first, he was commending the uh city DPW workers for the incredible job they did uh resurfacing that street. Um but he has a concern that um a lot of times trucks are going down that street when they miss a turn to go down, I believe Tiffany Street. So he's requesting that we put up a no truck sign on either end of the street. He said that the trucks in the past have torn that street up and done some damage. Jeff, if you have any insight on that, appreciate it.
I mean, insight, uh no, it's trucks are missing uh, missing their route and using that as a uh an adjustment to their route, uh we can certainly put signs up. That helps out the matter. It's not a truck ride, a designated truck ride at this point. Um trucks, they can't go down there either.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, if you could take a look into that, appreciate it.
Just unclear, you're asking me to put signs up or you're asking me to look into it?
Shouldn't this be more of a DPW matter, Public Works?
Yeah, we we can put it on our jet, yeah.
Okay.
I have an analysis done for you.
All right, thank you.
Next meeting.
All right, now that's all that I have at this point, I hope those nail items. Other members have?
Councilman Sheldon, I wanted to bring up something, it's uh, it's not on the agenda tonight, but I uh talked to Mr. Dulce. He said it was, that I should bring it up during public safety. I had spoken briefly to uh Chief Jackson, I believe I've also talked to uh Mr. Remondo about this. Um I just wanna throw it out there to everyone and maybe we can discuss it uh later on. Um with the chief's blessing, uh and obviously Corporation Council as well, I would like to recommend that the uh the Jamestown Police Department detectives um that are, they are not in uniform. Um they're uh in street clothes or, you know, suit and tie. I would uh propose that uh they begin to start wearing body cameras. Um right now, they do not wear body cameras. The only people that are wearing body cameras are um uniform police officers and they have to be on when they have uh contact with the public. I think it's imperative at the police department that we have transparency. Um and I think uh our detectives wearing body cameras when they have contact with the public would further show that we're uh trying to be transparent, uh that we're not hiding anything. And also, it's um eh when detectives go out in the field, um maybe they're, they're speaking to someone at a home. They're doing an interview at someone's house. Um I think it's important that uh the detectives be wearing body cameras. Uh if something were to happen or if some allegations were made against the detective, uh it'd be very easy to look at body cameras and uh see if i- if that uh, if the issue um was true. I just think it should, would uh show more transparency in our department. Um I would also add that not only the uh detectives wear them, but also the detective supervisors. Um there's a lieutenant back there and also there's a captain back there. And I I would like to see them also wearing body cameras, not necessarily in the station, but like I said, when they're out in the field and they're having contact with the public, doing interviews, knocking on doors. Um and it's also an issue if, if something was to happen, um and there was gonna be litigation against the city. Uh cause there was accu- accusations against any of these detectives, it'd be very easily for Corporation Council to uh look at the body cameras of the, of of the detectives wearing them.
I agree with um Councilman Russell. I I I think I was under the assumption that if you were a police officer, you were wearing a body camera. And I think that the more transparency uh the better. And um I I thank you for that suggestion and bringing that up, cause I I think it's very important that um transparency is shown and that every effort to um to make sure that we're not trying to hide anything is important. Thank you, uh Councilman Russell. So that's the best one. Approximately how many um detectives are there? Uh, Captain Jackson?
Including supervisors?
Well, I think that the two supervisors, right, that um Councilman Russell mentioned, so what else do you, how many do we have out there?
About ten.
Okay, thanks.
I have two questions. Acting Chief Jackson, do we know, are there any other cities that are doing this with their detectives and supervisors?
Yes, okay, any civilian contact.
Second question is, do we have enough uh body cameras at this point or is that something we're gonna have to purchase?
I would have to look at that.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I know we have spares, but I don't know if we have enough to outfit the entire detective bureau right now.
All right, yeah, if you could look into that and get back to us, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I can get back to us. Just a quick question uh that I would have on it is when the detective goes out and they're doing an interview. Would this be something that we automatically put on for an interview? How would that work with detective work versus, let's say, a regular officer who goes on a call, so to speak? Uh how 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 would that work logistically? I mean, there may be some issues of uh when they're doing investigations of I, the confidentiality, whatever, that try to solve, it's a little bit different. Uh can you explain how that would work?
Right now, any police officer that comes in contact with a civilian, generally speaking, must turn on his or her body cam. There are specific instances where because of the possibility of the crime committed or whatever they're investigating, the officer does not turn it on. If they do not turn it on, they have to dictate your report why they did not. But generally, I agree a hundred percent with Jeff. I think the body cam protects not only the employee, but the city as well as the civilian.
Right. Yeah, I agree. I just wonder how that would work differently with a detective work maybe a little different than, let's say, a regular officer that goes on a call and and makes a traffic stop or goes to a a house for a domestic dispute or something like that that has more of a a regular uh type of thing where detective work is a little bit different. So, I mean, you guys know how to do that. I was just wondering how that, how that would work.
But then wouldn't that protect the detectives also, um depending, I mean, even if it is delicate work um because of the allegations that could, you know, they could be, you know, interviewing someone and then someone could say that they did XYZ to them. And so I think that they should have it on regardless of what they're doing, um as long as they're dealing with um, you know, with the public. They should have that on, you know, just like you said.
I agree.
That protects us, that protects them.
The, like, one of the exceptions is if it's an emergency and you don't have time to turn it on. But aside from that, whenever you come in contact with a civilian, you need to turn on your body cam.
The only, the other, the only exemption to that, what what I would say, and I'm I'm sure the chief would probably agree with this, is uh the uh drug enforcement officers, uh that that's a touchy situation, cause now you're dealing with uh you're deal, you're dealing with criminal informants and that's um that that, that's different. Um I'm just talking about uh regular detective work and the detective supervisors that are also going out into the field and having contact with the public, uh uh but the uh drug enforcement uh work is, that that's completely different.
But can we take?
Would it be possible for the detectives, even if you had, you know, a few extra just to share them, cause maybe they're not all out doing public contact at the same time until we can figure out how or what way to get more if possible?
Sure.
That might be a start.
That's just a policy decision that can be made at uh the department level or would be something that the council would have to act upon?
I I can amend the policy. I do have to check if it is a topic of negotiations.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was getting. Okay, yeah, I think it's a great idea. I just wanna make sure we cover all our bases and uh we we can discuss it further into the uh the next few weeks and come up with a plan, so thank you. That it, Jeff? Is that what you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, I for bringing that up.
I just wanted to ask um my condolences to the police department on the loss of the police dog earlier. And um any, what do you guys do now from here? My daughters wanted to start a GoFundMe page to help purchase a new police dog because they just felt so badly. So um so where do you guys go from here with that?
Well, some of it depends on our canine handler. Um we have contacted the kennel where we bought the dog from to see if they're you know, if there's any warranty, if that's what you wanna call it or anything like that on the dog, so we've gotta check with that. And then we've gotta look into the cost of a new dog. I I I would like to say Eric, our canine handler, really puts his heart into it and it's, it's a, it's a tragic loss for all of us, Eric.
Well, if there's anything the kids can do, please let me know. They want to do something.
Okay, thank you.
Uh I have a question, what what will the department do in the meantime? Would um the canine uh Mitchell possibly be brought back into service or?
He's, he's not able to be brought back.
No.
He's losing mobility in his head.
He's retired, Tom. He's gone.
Bring those old retired guys back. But in the meantime, what might the department do then if it needed, is there one available from another municipality or?
Oh, yes, we have, we have uh state police, Jason. Um we have several with the sheriff's office also, so we can get one.
We can look into it down the road, hopefully it works out. We'd like to have another one, but again, it's, it's a, it's a big expense and, you know. A lot of procedures.
Do we know like the rough idea what it might cost for a, you know, trained dog?
Including the training that goes on or just?
I, well, yeah, I guess that's part of it, I so.
Ten to twenty thousand.
Okay.
Besides the cost of the animal, there's a lot of training that goes in, goes into it with both the handler and and the animal itself.
Is there any advantage now that um Officer Crack has that previous experience? I mean, that must help.
Oh, yes, lot, big advantage. And he's, he's increased his training so much that he is almost to the level of an instructor himself, so that can save money too.
Okay, anything else from public safety?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay, we'll move on to Public Works and uh Councilman Nelson.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. We uh have this one resolution, uh with the final change order. Um this is for our Patty Construction, this is for the Street Scape Reconstruction uh twenty nineteen. This is the uh, you know, this is from East Third Street from Main to Pine. It's Potter's Alley from second, East Second Street to Third Street and Black Bear Alley. Um there was uh an increase of eighteen thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, but there was a decrease of seven thousand nine hundred and five dollars, and I believe my math is correct then. So there's a a total increase of ten thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Um I don't know, Jeff, uh if anything else you'd like to add? No, it's just a, the standard clause, Tom said, it's kind of three projects rolled into one. Uh this is DRI money that we got from the state, part of the ten million dollars we got from the state. Um and this, I said, it'll close out the project, allow us to pay the contractor and get our reimbursement from the state. Yeah, that was all we had from Public Works.
Anything else, anybody else have any questions? Okay, if not, um is there anything else under new business to come before the council? Okay, and if not, we'll move on to remarks by the mayor.
All right, um I have a couple general items for the council, just an update. And then I'll ask a few of our department heads to update you on some projects. Uh and then I have a a several executive uh session items that I will um reiterate as we go along. Um the first update, and many of these are gonna be quick, I know we're getting pretty late here. I just update on the police chief. Uh at this point, obviously, many of you have seen uh that we have um an interim acting uh chief, Timothy Jackson, who's on the call today. Uh he has put in his application for the permanent chief position. Um at this point, we've received over thirty applications. Um we will be creating a nomination committee. We have various uh different groups, uh including some members of the public, some members of council, some members of police and some members of fire, uh to help make a final, uh to help interview applicants that we have. Um we are working through that process. The application period is open until the end of the month. Uh so the last day of July will be the last day we'll be accepting applications for that position. Second, an update I have is on the Human Rights Commission. Um we have uh received over eighty applications at this point. We still continue to receive some. Uh we have uh identified those, putting applications. Uh and we are starting to uh do um brief interviews with those individuals. Uh and I uh hope to have a final list of uh folks for the twelve available spots on the committee uh by the uh voting session in July. We'll provide those uh to you guys. I should be able to get those to you all, uh most likely next week uh so that you have some advanced, advanced time as well. Um or you, obviously, at the voting session, you get, you guys can to um hold on uh voting those names in as well to give you more time.
Mayor, I have a quick question about the Human Rights Commission.
Sure.
Mayor, who's who's part of that? Oh, I, who's, oh, we're walking in. I was just kinda went, who's a part of that interview process for that, for to kind of getting it down there, the Human Rights Commission?
Uh at this point, it is, it is just me. Each person uh has a time slot. Uh my uh secretary has been going through and scheduling a time slot to interview uh those that we have uh gone through from the applicant.
Thank you.
Um Brett, Councilman Sheldon?
Yes, my question is about six weeks.
I think you may have muted yourself, Councilman. I think you may have muted yourself, Councilman.
Yeah, you muted yourself.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Back on. I sent an email about six weeks ago requesting that you or the corporation council review the, um, the Human Rights Commission as it is in the city charter, wondering if anything has been updated at this point, uh, because from my recollection, that would chart, the commission was created about fifty-one years ago. And a lot of things I think have changed since then, that they're not included in there. And I wonder if there was any update on that.
Um, I, I apologize. I don't remember seeing anything on that, but I will get with the corporation council and go through it. Um, as of right now, the, the charter, or excuse me, the code that allows, uh, the Human Rights Commission mirrors the, um, municipal law, uh, that allows for a Human Rights Commission. Uh, so the, uh, the duties and responsibilities are exactly the same as those that are in, uh, the state's municipal law. Uh, but I will double check that with the corporation council and get back to you. I do apologize for that.
Oh, thank you.
Of course. Any other questions? All right. Um, just a couple of other updates on my end. Um, I do want to inform, uh, the council, uh, as well as the public is that one of our employees has tested positive, uh, for COVID nineteen uh, in the city of Jamestown. Um, we have had for quite some time policies on how to deal with employees, uh, that do test positive, uh, including, uh, quarantining and testing of employees that they may have come in contact with. Um, we are working hand in hand with the county, uh, to address any of those issues. Uh, at this point, we've only had one employee that has tested positive. Of all the other employees that that person may have come in contact with, they have all tested negative at this point. Uh, so we are going through a process to ensure that all individuals, um, are properly tested. Uh, and that if they do have to go under quarantine, um, that they are put under quarantine, uh, based on county order, county health order. Um, we are going through that process. Uh, in addition, if an individual, um, visits a state that is currently under a mandatory quarantine. So for example, if they go on vacation to Florida, uh, or other locations, uh, once they return, uh, there is an active, uh, health order that requires that they, uh, get quarantined, uh, immediately for fourteen days upon arrival. Uh, as well as if they're an essential worker, um, they're required to get tested, uh, before returning to work. Uh, so we do have some employees that have taken vacations to impacted areas. Those employees are tested before they are returned to work if they are essential. Otherwise they, um, are asked to quarantine, uh, for the two week period. Um, in addition, again, we encourage any employee that may think that they are, uh, that they have been exposed, uh, to get tested, uh, immediately. And we have a lot of our employees, uh, doing that, even if they feel concerned about it. Um, at this point, again, we, we had one employee that has tested positive, but we do have policies in place, uh, to ensure that, uh, there is, uh, no potential spread, uh, of the disease around. Um, I'll see if there's any questions on that from the council, but I wanted to be open and transparent, um, with you all on what the process has been, uh, as well as what's currently going on in the city.
Maybe this is a question. If the person has just been exposed that's positive, um, and the employee gets tested today or say the next day, how likely is it that they could potentially be infected a week? Might not have enough of a viral load to show up. So I, I guess, is there a factor in how quickly they get tested that could turn up a negative result for someone who may actually be positive? And retest, or is it really once you've tested negative, you may still be positive down the road in a week? But I, I, I guess I, what is the county's policy in terms of that?
Uh, the incubation period is two days. Uh, so we do look to see what the contact is or when the potential exposure may be, uh, and then have those individuals test. Um, in addition, we work directly with the county just to ensure that they are getting properly tested. Uh, and to determine if there's any active quarantine orders. So for example, if an employee has been contacted by a contact tracer, they may be put under a mandatory isolation. Those individuals, uh, typically let us know and we work with the county on those individuals and go under quarantine. Uh, but, uh, currently the incubation period is two days. So we typically wait the two days, we send them home, uh, and they get tested. As of right now, a lot of the testing sites we've been sending them to, uh, typically won't get them in for a day or two. Uh, and then there's usually a couple of days wait, uh, on receiving the results as well.
And then my second question is for employees who may be leaving the state, going somewhere else. How are you verifying that information as to where they've been? Is it strictly on a, I, I mean, they may go home and say they're staying home, but, or how are you verifying the fact that they haven't left the area and gone to an area where there's a high rate of infection?
Unfortunately, there's no good way for us to kind of track where they go. Um, it's really just, if they've let us know or if other employees have let us know where vacation may have been. Um, I will say that the state is now tracking anyone who is flying in from one of those states. Uh, so the state may order a mandatory quarantine if you've flown and you're flying back to New York, uh, from one of those states. Uh, they are now collecting, uh, doing a mandatory collection of your, uh, travel arrangements, uh, once you return to New York from one of those impacted states. Does that answer your question? There's no, the, the, the short part is it's not easy if they're traveling by car, things like that. There's no easy way to do it.
No, there isn't, but I appreciate the candor. I just wondered, oh, you know, it's strictly on a good faith that people will be careful and explain and follow the rules and some people may.
Correct.
As we can see by the uptick in the spiking places that are currently happening.
That is correct. Yep. Any questions on that? Okay. Um, so moving on, I just have two more other items and then just a few updates from our departments. I, we do have a centralized communications, um, in the city. Uh, we are, we have now started a, uh, city, uh, social media sites, including a Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and some other things, uh, to highlight the activities of the city going forward. Um, I do want to urge the council members that if you have anything that you would like to get out there on behalf of the city, uh, any information, any thoughts, any issues, um, or even if you want to appear in one of the videos just to answer some questions, uh, please reach out to, uh, Julia Hanley, who is also on the Zoom call today, uh, to assist in that process. Uh, we do want to try to get that information out. And if council members have anything that they'd like to get, even for their specific ward or for the city at large, um, please let us know so that we can try to, to get that out to the public. Um, and then the last item that I have is, uh, we had, um, we have put out as a city an RFP, um, for the services of a realtor slash broker. Um, as a city, we have, uh, identified the fact that there are many, um, vacant lots and properties that the city owns and has taken over over the past several years. Um, we have put out an RFP seeking a brokerage firm or realtor, uh, to help the city identify potential lots that could be marketed and sold and, uh, put back on tax roll. Um, so we've put out an RFP, uh, we have circulated it through, uh, the, uh, local, um, Chautauqua Cataragus, uh, Realtors, uh, Association. Uh, and if you have any individuals or, uh, if you know of any other brokerage firms or realtor firms that might be interested in, um, partaking in the RFP, um, please let our office know. You can direct them right to our website where we have that available. Uh, but we are seeking a firm to help us identify, uh, market. Put back in the tax roll. With that, those are all my general items. I do want to, um, leave just a couple of minutes to have some of our department to talk about a few, um, project update. Um, the first one is, um, Acting Chief Jackson. Uh, if you wouldn't mind just giving us a, a quick update on some of the, um, we'd seen in the city, uh, a open stabbing, uh, as well as, and if you could just give the council a quick update, um, on those two.
A recent homicide stabbing, um, it wasn't a random act. There was a relationship there. The suspect is in custody and we are scheduled for grand jury on July twenty ninth. Are there any, any questions about that? The recent shooting, we haven't been able to find a victim or a suspect. So we don't know if, what happened, um, with that yet. Nobody has come forward on that. Our, our canine, I talked about that a little bit. We are waiting for the lab results. And that should be within a week to see what happened with Canine Promber. And we have our Captain Isaacson retiring on August seventh.
Great. Um, thank you. Any questions for the acting chief on those items? All right. I'm going to move on to the fire department. Uh, if you could give us a, a quick update. Uh, Chief Coon.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Uh, just a couple of brief updates. Um, as you know, we've had several large incidents in, uh, the last month or so. Um, several of these fires have been incendiary in nature, which means they've been intentionally set. Um, a lot of these incidents, they have not been interrelated. Um, they've been kind of standalone incidents that have, uh, unfortunately, some of them have resulted in some quite significant damage to some structures and property. Up to date for our statistics so far, um, total calls for the year, we're at three thousand five hundred fifty-seven calls for the year. Of those, we've had two hundred fifty-seven fires. Um, thirty-three of those have been significant fires that have resulted in structural losses. Um, and to date, uh, for ambulance transports, we're at six hundred sixty-seven. Uh, as far as our, uh, in-house training programs are going, uh, we are moving forward with some training in conjunction with, uh, the Office of Fire Prevention and Control. They have reopened the Fire Academy. Um, our three recruit firefighters who were basically caught up in the New York pause, um, have returned to school. This is their final week. We look forward to them finishing up their training at the academy this coming Thursday. Um, and then immediately following that, we will be placing them into the regular rotation with the working platoons. Just, I know on some training, uh, some of our other training that's been on pause because of OFPC's, uh, suspension of training kind of statewide. Both the Fire Academy, the field trainers, the ones that are dispersed throughout the state that are certified by the state to teach, as well as the Fire Academy in the city of New York are slowly, um, working, training back into their schedules. Uh, we're going to be looking forward to doing some further in-house training as well. Um, we've got a couple of state fire instructors that are actually employed within the fire department and we're working with those individuals to develop some in-house training programs to try to mitigate some travel costs and, uh, try to raise, I guess, you could say our level of, um, in-house. Trying to raise our standards for our in-house training. I guess we've tried to work on some officer training, trying to develop some future leaders there. And, uh, there's no time like the present to do that. Any questions, guys?
Great. Thank you. I, I'll turn it over to you, uh, Jeff, uh, to talk a bit about the summer road construction so far.
Um, summer road construction is going really well. Um, as you know, we have a little, a little bit of a limited program this year because of the, uh, state funding getting cut back. I would say we're about two thirds of the way through the, uh, list that we presented this spring. The first half of milling, uh, is just about complete. And we'll be starting the next round of millings, uh, next week, early next week. Once we have, uh, I mean, we, I guess we'll be looking at, uh, where we'll go with the, the difference in the, the twenty percent and the thirty-three percent cut that we did, or that we base the original program on, uh, for later this summer. We have plenty of other maintenance projects to, uh, to keep us busy for sure. We're also working on the municipal building. As you know, the, uh, the product is underway. There's a lot of demolition going on the past week of the old system in the basement. The, uh, and, uh, we're, we're prepping for that. Uh, we have bids out right now for the, um, small section of Tracy Plaza that we're going to put a liner under and reconcrete prior to getting the, the chiller system, uh, coming in here in the next four to five weeks. Um, so that's been ongoing. It's the, we recently opened up the lactation room, uh, in City Hall, the municipal building for breastfeeding mothers. So that was, uh, small accomplishment that we've got under our belt. That's it as far as, uh, construction projects go. Any questions?
I just want to, um, give a shout out to Lakeshore on their job on Main Street. They did a great job. I was there watching the whole thing and, you know, they made it smooth and got it done in a couple of days.
Yeah, we felt that project went really smoothly and, and you're right, Lakeshore should get a lot of credit for that.
Great. Um, Jeff or Pat, do you guys want to talk about the sales of surplus, uh, vehicles, surplus equipment?
Okay. Sure, I can talk about that. Um, we did recently just sell, uh, four pieces of surplus equipment that was, uh, replaced as a result of the, uh, equipment that came in on the bond. Uh, there were a couple of older, uh, DPW trucks that we got rid of, um, an old Parks riding lawn mower and an old Parks trailer netted us about a little over eighty-three hundred dollars this time. Not a, not a huge amount, but, um, for the condition of the equipment was pretty decent. Yeah, money coming in is always better than going out, of course. Um, I do anticipate that we will have some more surplus equipment being sold, um, as, as the year goes on, as this, uh, other equipment rolls in as well, so.
Great. Thank you. Uh, and Jeff, do you want to talk a bit about some of the stump, the stump grinding in the parks, uh, park side?
Um, yeah, we've been kind of fortunate with the dry weather that we've been able to, we've been switching off every other week as far as mowing and, uh, odd weeks, we've been grinding stumps, uh, taking down trees, dangerous trees. Uh, of course, we got hit again over the weekend with, uh, a little windstorm, um, raised quite a few little problems for us. But, uh, so that's, that's put us a little further ahead than we thought we'd be at this point this year. So that's good. Um, I think one of the other things that we talked about, uh, earlier this morning was, uh, a lot of traffic we're seeing in Cray Point. We got a lot of folks out kayaking, a lot of people picnicking and things at Cray Point. Causing some issues a little bit for us with, uh, keeping up with the maintenance of, uh, garbage and that kind of things down there, but, uh, I guess, all in all, it's a positive.
I asked Jeff, have the bathrooms opened up because I'm, I'm all about that. And I believe the state parks have open bathrooms, but the city is not. Is there any chance that that's going to change?
Right now, we haven't talked about changing that rule. We don't, we don't have staff on the weekends to, uh, maintain the bathrooms.
Are they open during the week or are they open at all?
They're not currently open.
Councilman Caruba, the state, um, requires that we would disinfect those bathrooms at least three times per day, uh, in order to properly open those. So we followed the same suit as the county and have not opened them. Um, I will note that if we do, uh, open the bathrooms up for, uh, this season, uh, typically that incurs around thirty to forty thousand dollars in overtime fees. Uh, so we have kind of followed the suit of the county. And since we do not have the additional, uh, person power to not only disinfect the bathrooms, um, several times a day, as well as the overtime costs, um, we've held off on any bathroom openings.
Is that being, um, is that out, you know, out to the public? And also I know we, I've read it in our emails and also the, uh, bring it in, but take it out. Your, your garbage tools there. Is this sort of some kind of campaign or marketing thing to get the word out to the people that, if they know that the bathrooms aren't going to be open and, and if you bring in, uh, things, that you take out your trash too, is that going to be, um, you know, or is it already being out, is that out there for, you know, communicated to the public?
We, uh, Councilman James, we did put that out there, uh, to the public in a press release as well as social media. Uh, however, we will put that out again. I think that is something you're absolutely right. We should continue to put out there, uh, a, as we go forward. So we're trying our best and I think our, our citizens are doing a good job trying to take some of the trash in too. We have seen a lot of. We have seen a lot of extra usage of the parks, and we're trying to maintain those the best we can. This is just a very strange year, and as much as we'd love to, you know, keep everything exactly the same, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be that way this year.
Thank you.
Of course. Any other questions? All right. Just two more updates. If I could ask the clerk just to talk to us a bit about how things are going since we've brought everything back up to speed and which things are going to be appointments now versus come?
Sure. So things have been going well since, since the lobby reopened to the public. We are still requiring appointments for passports with that passport photos as well as marriage licenses. Those applications take a little more time. There's more tendency for people to kind of back up in line. So we do ask that if you need either one of those services that you do call to make an appointment for that, we can still get you in. I know on the marriage license side for a same day appointment when you call passports, that's a little more restrictive just based on the number of agents that might be available at certain times of the day. For things like birth, death, and marriage certificates that folks need, that's a relatively quick process. If you have the capability to print out your application ahead of time and fill it out, it saves, you know, a good five minutes at the window, and it's about a two-minute process that way. We're literally just printing up the document for you. Our drop boxes have been getting used quite frequently. I want to let people know we do check those routinely throughout the day, multiple times in the morning as well as the afternoon. They're great for parking ticket payments, BPU payments, retiree insurance for the city, dog license renewals. Those things that, you know, we, we can still, you know, mail you a receipt if you'd like one. The dog license renewal, we send back that signed copy anyway, so there really is no need to have to bring it in and wait in line at the window. I also wanted to let the public know that as of this year, we are no longer issuing hunting and fishing licenses. That came down from the state DEC. They revamped their, their system, their software, as well as the hardware got upgraded. And so as we sold less than fifteen per year for the last, I think they did it on, based on three to four years, we have, we're no longer a destination for those.
Great. Any questions? All right.
I have a question, you know, um, the, you know, our permits and things like that is kind of off, but is there a way that we'll, when we're down the road, that we will be able to actually access the actual like special event permits right online, fill them out, send them, you know, via internet instead of versus, you know, it's very limited right now that we can just pull out, you know, like the marriage license and things like that. You can go ahead and then you have to print it off, fill it and take it out. Will there be somewhere down the road? And I know we've talked about websites, getting the website, but I was just wondering, will there be someday where we can just actually access, someone can just really access everything that the city clerk's office has at their fingertips? I mean,
Yeah, Vicky, I did sit with Zach and Julia the other day. We had a meeting to talk about getting the city clerk's presence a little more known on our new social media platforms as well as having those, those applications available. You know, and I'd be happy to provide, you know, best practices for completing those applications just to make it a little easier on event sponsors and participants in the events. I know it's a cumbersome process right now, so we are working on that.
Councilwoman. Councilwoman, I'll just, I'll just add that my, my team, including many of the folks on here, have been investigating and looking at citywide management software to allow us to digitize our records as well as provide as well as pay the fee online. So we are looking at programs that we will, and if we go forward with it, would implement in the 2021 budget. So it's something we've been looking at this year. COVID has definitely pushed that process a lot quicker, and we're hoping to have something in place that can be funded in the 2021 budget.
Thank you.
Of course.
I had one more thing for Jeff. I meant to ask the lactation, the lactate room, where's that located at City Hall? I'm so glad that we have that so the moms can breastfeed. That's great.
It's, it's in the ground floor. What I describe where it is, it's ground floored. I guess on the ground floor would be the easiest way to say it, in a separate area, separate room.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Councilwoman, just to give you an update on that, we had received a request actually from those that have been visiting the to have a room for nursing mothers. So as we went through City Hall to look for a potential room that we could renovate as well as provide a safe space and comfortable area for nursing mothers, as well as connected to a bathroom that could be available. We were, find one on the ground floor, and in the next coming weeks, now that we've got it painted and renovated, we will be putting up signage for anyone who's visiting the municipal building to utilize that lactation room.
That's good job.
All right. And the last thing I have is Crystal, you could just talk a bit briefly about how permits are going.
Sure. So since the beginning of July, there have been twenty-seven permits issued. That's not necessarily to say twenty-seven have been processed. You know, many times as someone comes in for a permit, Larry will work with those individuals on a checklist of items that they need to come back to him with, so. But twenty-seven since the first of the month and a hundred and seventeen since the first of June have been issued. So it's a combination of everything, fence permits, pool permits, decks, roofs, you name it.
Great. Thank you. Any questions on permits? We're getting back into the swing of things. Okay. The last thing I have is just items for executive session. There is a correction from the original agenda that went out. I have two items for executive session regarding the proposed leased city property, of which the value could be impacted. I have three items for potential litigation. I have one item for collective bargaining, and I have three personnel matters. At this point, no action would be taken, and we would ask that the Corporation Council stay along with, we have two other individuals, Tim D'Angelo and Daniel Brennan, who would join us for executive session to talk about some of those potential litigation items.
All right, just one thing before we go into executive session briefly. Again, we're off next week. Maybe, unless we have to have a special meeting. But our scheduled voting session is the twenty-seventh, and again, I know I've said this before. It would be my desire, if possible, that we could get back and meet at City Hall. We'll monitor the situation as closely over the next couple of weeks. And hopefully, we'll be back live in session at City Hall by the twenty-seventh, but again, we'll monitor that. So with that, do I have a motion to go into executive session for, I believe, two items for property transfer, three for potential litigation, one for collective bargaining, and three personnel matters. So moved by Councilwoman Karuba and seconded by?
So moved, I mean, second.
Councilwoman James, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll give the mayor time to turn off the recording and then we will go into executive session.
Great, thank you. And just a reminder, if we could keep Corporation Council, Brian Thompson as well, I apologize for missing him. And then I believe the rest of the staff, unless anyone would like them to join, they're good to go. Give me a second to stop the.